One dog sounds.
That's okay.
That's okay.
I'm late.
Welcome to the Wednesday, April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five regular board meeting. If everyone can please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the entire state. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have the reading of the mission and vision statement?
Yes, mission statement, Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
And the vision statement is Richmond Community Schools, a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit to prepare students for lives of choice, purpose, and service. Thank you. Moving on to celebrations, Dr. Wright.
President Pickering, trustee, I'm going to ask that Mrs. Bridget Hazel Baker, our director of student support and communications, visit the podium to acknowledge tonight's honor. Mrs. Hazel Baker, welcome, ma'am.
Well, I'm glad to have a cheat sheet. Hopefully, we can put this also up on the board so you guys can all see our amazing staff as well. We are here to celebrate our rock stars. And if some of you are unfamiliar, there's, yeah, there they are. Ladies, you guys please come up, or clerks and secretaries, come on up to today. Yes, yes, yes. This is just a fraction of what makes part of Richmond Community Schools great. But again, these are not just colleagues, but they're also friends. So I'd like for you all just to introduce yourselves, come up and introduce yourself and tell what, say your name and what school you work at.
Carrie Devonam and I'm Matt Baxter, Community Youth Services. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Diana Fox and I work at Fairview Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Sarah. This is a good question.
Hello, I am Sonia Thompson at Dennisville School.
Hi, I'm Tricia Under and I work at Dennis.
Hi, I'm Cindy Smith and I work at Crested.
Lori Yang, I work at Hibbert.
Hi, Deana Davis, I'm at Richmond High School.
So again, today's especially, you may have noticed a lot of flowers when you're walking through central office today. Did any of you guys get any special accolades or anything today? No one forgot, right? All right, good, good, good. So again, today's Administrative Professionals Day. And we are to celebrate, and then, of course, these are the many of our teammates that we have here at Richmond Community Schools. We had a small little reception just a little bit ago in the lobby here at its central office. Some, some people weren't able to attend tonight due to other commitments, and it's a beautiful day. So we understand self-care as well. So again, we're just celebrating our rock stars. Do you guys have any questions?
I've got just a statement. I want to say every time I come in and out of the different buildings, I feel like you all are a smelly bunch. So thank you very much, very hospitable and very welcoming. And so I know that our community members are getting that too. It's not just, oh, we're members here, you know, it's, that's who you are. So I just, I want to say thank you for your hospitality and your smiles.
Yeah, I agree. You know, I don't know how you all do it. You all keep my kids in check and basically all of our CS kids in check. So I'm always just amazed when I'm in a building and you all are greeting them with a smile. You know their names, you know who they are, you know where they're supposed to be. I can't imagine trying to keep up. So you all are greatly appreciated. So thank you.
And we do have one retired in our, in our list as well. You're in the list for, how many years have you been with the district, Ms. Senna? Thirty-five, thirty-five years. So big shoes to replace, but I'm very excited for your next journey, your next chapter. We appreciate everything you do and mentoring many of us as well. So we appreciate all that as well.
Because Hazel Baker, as I alluded to earlier, we also celebrated a brief celebratory reception with our, our staff. But they have really been taking great care of me as I've been visiting in and out of your buildings over the last several weeks, meeting with teachers. And as President Pickering alluded to, not only are you all keeping count of all the students, but you also are keeping count of all the adults in the building. And for our principals and assistant principals and other administrative staff members, again, we can't do it without you all. Ms. Sales Meyer is well aware that I would lose my mind if I'm in at times when she's away. I do just that. But again, we know that you all are humble, reserved, and rather shy, probably embarrassed to be here. But we are so appreciative that you came out, so appreciate, appreciative that you show up every day and show off for our kids and for our kids. Thank you.
Can you tell us again, how many, how many years of service have you had for our CS? How many years is your eighteen?
Eighteen.
Four each?
Twelve, thirteen.
Nice.
What year was it?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Three.
Three.
Three years.
Six.
Twenty-nine.
I don't know. I've been here since I graduated high school. I started working with our CS, so on and off for twenty-plus years.
So again, so much years of experience in here in the list. So I mean, you've had a very successful kindergarten round and for our elementary schools now we're starting to gear up towards online registration as well. So appreciate all of your help. Any other questions? Would you like a photo?
Absolutely.
Okay, should you guys still come up? Right here, that's just, pardon me. Maybe get a couple rows. Next up, do we have anyone sign up for public commentary?
We do.
So let me just read my little spiel. Public commentary, those who wish to comment at this evening's board meeting, the maximum time to speak is five minutes. Please keep your comments fact-based and within the time you're permitted. Comments are not to be personally directed for reasons. Comments recognize the work of staff and students are always welcome. However, critical remarks concerning specific school personnel or students are to be made through the complaint process available in policy ninety-one thirty. School board members do not respond to public comments during a meeting, but the board president will send you a personal follow-up email.
Our first tonight is Renee Colat. So I'm actually not going to be speaking for the majority of the time. So I am the ENL teacher at RHS. I previously was a Spanish teacher and I helped arrange the trip to Puerto Rico. And my lovely students here are going to tell you about how it went because it is thanks to you all and your approval that we were able to go. So. This is Avery Vanderbord and Vanessa Vance.
First, I just want to thank all you guys for approving the trip. I know it's been a while that we've been leading up to that, fundraising a lot, doing all the concessions. So yeah, I want to thank you guys for that. I think the trip went really well. It really taught me a lot about Spanish in general, but also, you know, Puerto Rican culture. And for somebody who's never really been outside of the Midwest, it was a really fun experience to get to learn how other people live and how different cultures can collide and how it really is a melting pot of all these different cultures there. Yeah, it was really fun. I got to connect with a lot of new people that I didn't previously know, even in the school. And I, I know there's another trip that might be coming up in the next few years, and I really hope that one gets approval too, so that students can have the same wonderful experience that I did before ending their high school years. Like she said, I'm Vanessa Vance, and I just want to thank you guys, like Avery. Going to Puerto Rico was truly such an honor because before going there, I never really felt connection to Spanish. But ever since we've been there, I feel like I can connect it to things that we learned in Puerto Rico, and it truly just makes me want to indulge in Spanish so much more.
Thank you.
Questions? Question?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I figured I forgot this was public commentary. I didn't know. I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask a bunch of questions. You go ahead.
Well, y'all can email me. I work at the school. So email your questions. I sent you a PowerPoint of pictures and things, so, so I can share that with you. And then also, if I'm still in the five minutes, from, is this weekend? So we are really excited. I'm the junior class sponsor for that. Dr. Wright here is going to come and be a chaperone. So if y'all want to come out and see him cut a rug, y'all should come out as well. It's this Saturday from eight to eleven at eight to the bar. It's going to be a lot of fun. So thank you all. Thank you. Next is Eric Pearson.
Hello. I wanted to speak today because I saw that you're going to be working on or voting on the anti-bullying policy today. And it brought to mind all of the work that the whole school board has done, updating all the policies. It's been a lot of work, both for the members of the board and for Mr. Mops and Ms. Hazel Baker and lots of other people who participated in that process. As part of that process, members of the coalition that I'm a part of have been reading and studying the present policies and also the administrative guidelines. We want to thank Mr. Mops for showing us how to find the administrative guidelines that show how those things will be implemented. And we have some suggestions of things that could make those policies more available to the public, to the students, to the parents, and other members of the public who might need to learn about them. So for instance, there are already anti-discrimination and anti-harassment policies in place, and the anti-bullying, anti-bullying policy references them. But to find information, if somebody feels that they have been a victim of discrimination or harassment, it's very difficult to find it on the website. You have to look under employment opportunities, and then under employment opportunities, it has the anti-discrimination policy. But all the wording on the website is about section five oh four. It's all about discrimination in relation to special education. It doesn't mention any other forms of discrimination or harassment. So it'd be difficult for a regular citizen, student, or parent to find that information if they needed it. Also, in the administrative guidelines and in the policies, the numbers don't match up to the new numbers now. When a member of the public goes into the public website, for instance, the five-five-one-seven-point-oh-one that you'll be voting on today, the anti-bullying policy is still under four-five-one-seven. So if you work at it for a long time, you can figure it out, but it's not immediately obvious to members of the public. And also, when, and when and if you approve the anti-bullying policy, it says that there has to be a link on the website to the information that the IDO provides for resources on anti-bullying. And the reason that this feels important to me is that I know that students and even teachers still experience incidents that make them not feel like they completely belong in the community. At the Black Business Expo that was held at Coleman Center in early February, a very informal, non-scientific survey was shared with members of the public. And of the only fifty people who filled it out, sixteen of them identified as students and eight of them as teachers. And of the students, two-thirds of them said that they had witnessed incidents of racial insensitivity in school, and a hundred percent of the teachers, that was only eight people. But all eight of them said that they had witnessed them. So it's important to have avenues through which people can report things like that and know that they will be taken seriously and that action will be taken. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our work session. Dr. Wright.
President Pickering, trustee, I'm going to ask that Mrs. Bridget Hazel Baker, our director of student support, communication, as well as my assistant superintendent of elementary education, Mrs. Melissa Mark, join us here in the podium just to share the most recent of data points regarding student support and social promotion services.
All right, hello again. So in August, I was named the new director of student support services, and I was charged with overseeing the partnerships with Centerstone, Middle Health Services, Meridian Health Services, communities and schools, attendance initiatives, behavior specialist, communications. So we're just going to take some looks at, take a look. I think you guys probably will have this. I tried to make the font really big so everyone will be able to see. Erica. All right, so. So I meet periodically with school principals to go over the needs and students that at-risk students may require referrals to different service providers for school success. At these periodic meetings, the principal, assistant principal, CI, site coordinator, middle health counselors from Centerstone and/or Meridian, guidance counselor, school resource officers, attendance liaisons, et cetera, other groups will meet to discuss the needs and challenges of the school's most at-risk students. So during these meetings, we look at, we look at data points to see if a student is improving or, or maybe declining or maybe struggling. We discuss students who are more at risk of being a potential high school dropout due to varying attributes. So some of those attributes that these students may experience are trauma, possibly incarcerated parents, special education services, re-reduced lunch, previous habitual truants, et cetera. So let's take a look at some of these data points that we are booking out when we meet with these, with our principals. We look at grades, we look at attendance, number of office referrals. And we're also looking to see whether they're a client of Centerstone or Meridian, if they're receiving mental health services, if they're being case managed by communities and schools, if they've had two or more Department of Child Services cases this school year. We also look up with handle with care. And then also mobility. How, how often are they moving around to different schools, not just in Richmond, but possibly throughout the county, or coming back and forth for enrollment, and also their life. So looking at that, our first point that we're going to look at is that as attendance. So with the new attendance law requires schools to alert parents of students unexcused absences before legal intervention by the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. So I have been working with our school's attendance liaisons to ensure accurate attendance reports. And here's just a little, here's a flow chart that I created this year that is helping us to explain to our parents the different levels of unexcused absences. Currently, Richmond Community Schools follows the ten unexcused absences marks a student as habitual, habitual truant. So looking at that, we're looking at, these are some of the factors that we have for attendance liaisons. What happens when we're adding it to Parents Square, whether they're getting a notification, getting that call. We have an attendance intervention meeting at the five unexcused absences. So that there has been a new practice for us this year. And, and I hope that you'll see in some of this that it's helping improve our attendance rates at our districts, at our school, at our school buildings. So out of our eleven schools, we, this has been a learning curve, and we are asking for grace because it's such a new, new practice. But just as far as keeping track of data and seeing those kiddos that may be not just missing school unexcused, but we're talking about kids that maybe also have excused absences. You know, maybe the parent has called them in sick nine times, and then, but maybe they have missed now nineteen days of school. And that is nineteen days of instruction lost. So and the best place for kids to be is in schools. So here's another, just a data point. And this is as of this year. So we have a hundred and forty-three habitual truants at Richmond High School that have been marked habitual truant, so they have over ten unexcused absences. We're looking at, so these are some of those kiddos. We're looking at their records to see where they habitual truant last year as well. Were they habitual truant in junior high, in elementary school? So, excuse me, in elementary school, we're now looking at also preschool. So these are just kind of the, some of the data points. Some of our, again, attendance liaisons are learning this new practice. Jana Drew is a lifesaver. She has been a rock star. She's the one who sends the certified letters out to the parents, informing them of their child's habitual truant status. But again, these are just, these are some preliminary numbers. If we look at last year's numbers, the numbers aren't quite as high because we didn't have as much, we didn't, we weren't tracking those numbers periodically. So just to look at that, you can look, again, this is very small. We showed this same data point when we met with the assistant superintendent with some of the data meetings we had. But you can see overall, our district attendance rate is going up. So students are coming to school regardless. We have, we do have those portion of students, percentage of students that are missing school more regularly. But if you can kind of look as far as last year being the yellow, and then this year being the green, we have an uptick in all schools except just Richmond High School. Richmond High School has just a bit of a downturn. And this was just first semester data. I did not, I did not calculate semester two into this, into this graph. Any questions about that so far? Yes, sir.
A hundred and forty-three habitual truant students. Small, no question.
I get that a lot.
I have.
So any of those students, when we have those tenants or habitual probation, is being involved in that, in that talk? And then our hope is then, what kind of support systems are we putting in place for these students that have? So Mr. Fisher is doing an immaculate job. Dustin Cushing is now also at the high school helping with attendance as well. So we have a team over there working. Again, the tenants law is only K through six. Richmond Community Schools is expected to do that K through eight. So we are not, as far as doing those regular meetings, but some of those students that are the three-foot flyers or the no flies are so many tardies. For this, this is just one of those data points for some of those kiddos that we're trying to keep track of in the, for the Office of Student Support.
What happened, sorry. Well, I say, what happens when they do miss a lot of classes? Like I will say, my freshman year, I went to all three lunches. I ditched my fourth grade class and I had Saturday school. And I didn't ditch for ever again. But you know, like, that was a good deterrent for going to all three lunches.
Well, and right now, we're just looking at different attendance incentives we can have right now. There are some programs, Chamber of Commerce is helping us a lot with the, the ten school every day. And our senior attendance is really quite stellar because students have that chance to win the car or scholarship. And then, I mean, perfect attendance is great too, but we're really looking at initiatives over the summer right now to start looking at ways to highlight improved attendance, not just perfect attendance. So if a student, a student had, you know, maybe sending a letter home that there's improved attendance this month, you know, we're excited about that. I've been talking to Mr. Jones also at Charles, looking at some other different attendance incentives. Communities and Schools has a ready set pro grant that they are able to use at their, at their request for attendance incentives. Not sure how successful that's been right now, but that is a tool in our toolbox that we can, to use to maybe get that for us. So yeah, there are ways. The prosecutor office, we are sending habitual truant information to the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. We have not received any arrest. So, but for, we haven't had, we've had some parents transfer schools up to Delaware County, and their attendance from Richmond Community Schools followed them to Delaware County. And the Delaware County Prosecutor did prosecute. So it's working in other counties right now. I just don't know where we're at right now. And that's something that we're going to look at to see how we can help improve that, that as well. Yes, sir.
So if you disaggregate the data by grade levels of the high school?
I have.
And does that show concentration at ninth and tenth?
It shows concentration in tenth and eleventh.
Tenth and eleventh.
Freshmen aren't too bad, but it's the tenth and eleventh. And then, of course, if you have twelfth grade, it's doing really well because they know, I mean, middle. Yeah.
And is, have you?
I, I don't have that reported, but I can, I can give that.
Have you attempted then to determine, is there a correlation between the core attendance and?
And, and credits, yeah. Well, and that's, that's the data we're looking at right now, also to see how many years of habitual truancy they've had. So that's been a correlation as well. So the students that are juniors right now that have been habitual truant since they were fourth grade, they are very low on credits. They're just, we're just looking at the data points, and hopefully we'll be able to explain that communication with parents, that's the, the, the pattern of habitual truancy is, is aligned to high school success or failure.
I didn't ditch, so I was trying to be the perfect one over here, but I didn't do Saturday. But I guess my question is, looking at the data, and, and thank you for the increase in attendance, but I'm trying to think about if, if it's happening, habitual truancy is happening in the elementary schools. Are we dissecting the data to find out why they're being, they're not, they're missing school? Is it due, is it something that we can find out? Is it due to, you know, maybe a hip a lot or something that through medical abuse? through medical abuse or something that way?
Attendance intervention meetings, we have an attendance, we call it a school success form. And what can we do if a child misses the bus? Who is someone that we can call, that parent can call as a backup if that child misses the bus? Or what time should my child be in bed to make it to the bus, to make to the busing time or to have? What kind of routines can we set up in the morning? So it's also to explain to the parents or trying to inform the parents that missing school, if you're tardy, or tardies are bad, so likely be at school. And I mean, we're talking about tardies as well. We have a lot of tardies as well. Parents that are just, just, students that are missing a lot of core instruction in the morning. But again, we don't have any sort of, we don't have detention or Saturday school. At Charles, they are doing some, some new things with tardies. Parents have to actually walk into the building, sign their students in. If they're tardy, other schools are looking at that as well. I know that some of the neighboring school districts have maybe ten tardies counts as an absence, but I'm worried about that aspect because then I don't want to go into a student's minutes of instruction if they have an IMP, you know, worry about.
Just, and not just to follow up with this. So if a, if a student is missing because, let's say, of domestic violence issue, and I'm just using this as example, how is that reported to the schools?
I'll pull that up in just a minute.
I was about to get at that, yes, because I, I'm just trying to figure out, is there a correlation to those, that data?
Well, and that's, I'll be able to show you that, that as well. So when we meet with those principals during those monthly meetings, we're going over some of those data points as well.
Mrs. Hazelbaker, one last thing, going back to that. And you may come to this later in your presentation, but everything that you're saying is so positive right now. And it's, it's, it's just very positive, your information. The core of it is, what are the ramifications to the parent knowingly, intentionally allows for this to happen?
There are no repercussions. So there are some families that know, I mean, we send letters and we do the calls, but they understand, I mean.
The reason I ask is, because technically under Indiana law, it is educational neglect, which is a level six or a level five felony.
If the student is failing. So if the student has poor grades, but if the student has missed fourteen days of school and still has.
They have changed that aspect of the law then?
They are failing.
That is just really too big.
If it's, if they, if they have the impact.
And so to, to move to what remember Aloriaga and what remember Stevens have questioned and of what Mrs. Hazelbaker has reported on, you know, in speaking with teachers over the last several weeks, especially at the elementary level. We do have state statute that is intended to hold parents and guardians accountable. However, as Mrs. Hazelbaker mentioned, you know, and as we know, at times laws are only as effective as they are enforced. And with such backlog of cases, not only here in the city of Richmond, but also across the state, across the country, there is a challenge with levels of accountability. Which to Mrs. Hazelbaker's point, we had a lot of services we're wrapping around and supports. Even our classroom teachers are reaching out to parents and guardians. And so at the elementary level, the challenge also becomes in holding students accountable for parents and guardians that are not, it's, it's challenging. So we need, we need our parents and guardians to partner and get, get the students to us.
I agree, I agree with that. I think one of my challenges too is that I'm just speaking, not from experience, but I'm just speaking from hearing things that if, what if a kid is coming out of district? Okay, I'm just using this example. Let's say Connorsville were decent and they move into an elementary school and they're in habitual truancy over there, but they have to move to a different school. Is that, does that count against us or how's that?
There, those, those, those days of being absent will follow them to their new school, so.
So we get?
Well, yeah, I mean, in theory, I mean, I mean, in Power School, it'll say how many days they were absent, but in that child C1, that parent's still gonna be held accountable for how many days they're absent that child. So they're still considered habitual truant.
So in short, yes, such data, even their attendance.
From a, from a different school district?
From a different school district. It all follows them.
Well, some years, it doesn't, doesn't follow them.
But it does.
Well, but most importantly, this is the, I think the thing that I would want our community and our parents and guardians to really understand is that even with tardies, and I know Mrs. Hazelbaker's will look into that later in the presentation, when our students are missing, if it's even the first ten minutes of instruction, a lot of times, especially with our new science reading curriculum that they're on new levels or throughout the district, some intentional focuses, if you miss five days, that's fifty minutes of instruction. A lot of times, that's cold instruction at a length level that students are missing. So not only are their, is their attendance data following, but their academic data, which the correlation of subpar or very low academic points is associated related to core attendance. To say, thank you.
I, I want to just also just give, just some brief strengths and maybe some challenges that we have for each. So the strengths that I think are very impactful are, we're having monthly meetings with all the attendance liaisons. So we, anybody who's new, we have somebody who's mentoring them as far as how to do the reports in Power School. And then we, Jana has also created a spreadsheet, so we're able then to track that data, find out where a child is as far as number of days out and when those attendance intervention meetings are happening. So those attendance contracts are also coming to central office. We get a copy of that and see that the parent has signed that and said, yes, I agree that I will, that we, that we've spoken about this. We add that as a log entry and then hopefully next year they will have improved attendance. So again, we're trying to work as a team. And then again, some of the challenges are just. What did I say the challenges are? I would say it's, it's been hard to, parents, just parents realize that there's nothing, you know, we don't have any sort of teeth to do anything right now. So maybe that's something the board can discuss, or maybe we can talk about some guidelines. I don't know, something different. But again, maybe some of this because of a parent's behavior, an adult's behavior, that's affecting the student's time in the classroom.
And all we can really do is refer to the prosecutor or to the Department of Child Services. And once we do that, then it's.
It's out of our hands, et cetera.
And so if nothing is happening on our, we have.
Which is something we actually put in motion a few semesters ago when I visited with teachers, especially with our elementary teachers. It was the same challenge, the same complaint, which was attendance and tardy, absenteeism and tardiness. And so even prior to the state's action that was passed, we had swung in action and was very intentional, met with the local prosecutor's office, other judicial entities, and started to take preemptive and proactive measures when the law was, was enacted and passed. We all were anxious and excited that as you have such.
Trying to talk into that, maybe doing those attendance intervention meetings with parents first thing in the morning so that parent can see what that child is actually missing in the classroom. So you know, if that means bringing a couple of donuts to that room, they bring up, you know, but just so that parent can say, oh my gosh, because I'm, you know, we're not moving our tails. This is what my child is missing every day from school.
Simply put, our parents and guardians have to continue to partner with us.
Yes. And one last thing on attendance, I would say on the positive is those monthly attendance meetings with the clericals have been very beneficial so that we can all get on the same page for kind of tackling and hopefully improving this attendance piece. But having all of them get together, share strategies that they may be doing in their building, the data collecting, how they're organizing it has been really beneficial for our clerical, so that's very, very much. I'd say as a, as a parent, I, you know, I do like that all the schools can send to me a notification when my child is sick on Parents Square, which is very helpful. I, this might be controversial. As a busy parent, if you don't get it, I'm sure I, you know, I, I'm more diligent now, just haven't even called it. Right? You got a sick kid, trying to get others to school, you know. I don't always want to hand to everybody like to make it super easy, but I do think if, if people have to call, they might not have Parents Square. I know we always try to do that push. It is just, it would just be.
So simple, just reply back. My child has, you know, their attendance appointment this morning will be ended by ten.
But you know, sometimes it's looking, some people might not realize that those notifications, if you sign up for Parents Square, you get the notification, even typed in sick doctor's appointment. But yeah, if I had to call every time, it, yes, it's not gonna.
And we're asking.
They, they might not know that, so.
Well, when we're just reminding clericals, hey guys, you're picking up Johnny redundant, you know. And, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll see you back after lunch, you know, to not miss the whole day for a morning dentist appointment.
And I know we highlighted too, but our EL team has had some targeted parent times for them to get signed up for Parents Square so that we make sure that we're reaching all of our, all of our different populations.
The notifications look like, I don't use Parents Square anymore.
I can show you, you'll get it. It just says, hey, so and so's, or so and so wasn't there, they missed this. And you can literally just type in.
My dentist sends me an, an appointment that says, reply, yes, why or no, if I'm coming. It's one letter. That's a text.
Yeah, yeah. Notice, yeah, notification, you can put in, you can put in anything. Doctor's appointment, sick, whatever it is. And I like because it'll stay and then if I, then you forget, or you're like, did I? It'll show like that, what you responded sticks in there and you can see that, so.
That was one of the features with Parents Square a few years ago, if you all recall, when we presented for UO's approval, along with so many other aspects, to Mr. Webber's point, trying to make it user friendly for the active parents as well as those parents that prefer these programs. Does anything?
And it does alert you.
I'm ready. Alright, so our next community partnership is, we're gonna talk a little bit about Centerstone. Centerstone provides school-based therapy, provides integrated mental health treatment for children and adolescents. And again, in that data, those data meetings, we are looking to see what students do have. Maybe some on-campus mental health services or maybe even off-campus. So we don't, we don't talk specifics or anything. We just want to know maybe if that's additional support for that child. And maybe we're checking, checking to see students that, you know, with Centerstone, maybe they have increased attendance because they are seeing that caring adult every day. Or checking to see maybe that is helping with grades as well and of course with all of those referrals. And then another benefit of Centerstone is also that it's free. There's no cost to Richmond Community Schools for our Centerstone services. Here's just a look at some of the reports. Centerstone also gives me monthly reports. I meet with them monthly for lunch and we go over how, how it's going in the buildings, maybe some staff turnover, maybe a principal may have told me some, some challenges they may be having. And so we discuss that again every month. And then this just looks at some of the referrals per year, I mean, per month. So you kind of see where we're at with some of those referrals for Centerstone. And again, Centerstone provides those to me monthly. And then with Centerstone, with being with this new position, I went and created also a flow chart. It kind of looks like a hot mess, but it does make some sense. And we change, I think this is what, six point seven addition? It's changed so many times. So with those partnerships, we're trying to look to see what are some best practices to help our kids and our staff follow that. Again, Centerstone, they, when they are in our buildings, they are only seeing Centerstone clients. When, if a Meridian, if a student may need help or services, that principal can call, that parent can say, we have Centerstone or we have Meridian. You have a choice of what you would like. And so with that, you can kind of look to see whether we have a non-evergency, whether a child just may need someone to talk to, fill out a referral form for Centerstone or Meridian. If we're in a crisis and that student may need something urgent, Centerstone has recently launched their mobile crisis response team. And we actually had them come and speak to our principals this past month and share a little bit about what that crisis response team looks like if a student is in crisis. And then Meridian also has onsite risk assessment. They have someone on staff at Richmond High School that will travel to our buildings to do a risk assessment as well. Parents, again, if they decide not to have their child participate in any sort of mental health services in the area of crisis, then we will call DCS because that is, there could be a danger to that child or to themselves. So again, that's just our little flow chart. I don't say little, it's big, it's huge. But you can just, it just, it changes and it probably will change again, hopefully.
Mrs. Hazelbaker, I apologize. The change is actually positive because this is evolving as our social emotional supports are evolving. As we are partnering with such Meridian and Centerstone and others, they are also committing to our students and committing to the services even that. This is, this is also in addition to our local school counselors.
That's right.
Other support staff.
So like again, in the far right, if there are current Centerstone client and they are in a crisis, we look for that Centerstone staff member that, that maybe has half follows as students or on a case by case. This next part, again, Meridian Services, oh, this is the next one, sorry, next one. Meridian, I'm sorry, some of the concerns I have with Centerstone, we are making sure that Centerstone needs to be reminded to not pull students from instructional time. We need to make sure they are, you know, whether it's a specials or just, we want to make sure the students aren't missing that time. And then there have been some concerns also with staff turnover and some time management on their staff. So those are some of those conversations that we have monthly and that we go over and just.
What is the expectation for them to pull the students then?
I'm sorry?
When are they supposed to pull them?
If they have, if that student may be in a special, they're also doing lunch groups as well, so to meet their minutes of service. So it kind of, it kind of, and it also depends on the child. The child is, needs to talk to someone or just really trying not to get any of the English, language arts or math.
However, if, that is what, correct me if I'm wrong, if it is a routine check-in, routine visit by Centerstone, we are requesting and requiring that, and definitely encouraging them not to disrupt the core content instruction. However, if it is a situation in which it's immediate, it's a crisis, it's now, and of course those are. How many students are Centerstone currently serving?
It's a good question.
I think it's more than.
I probably would have had that number for you if I was in.
You're good. I lose more than guess.
I would.
I would guess over two hundred.
I would think that a child with some actual needs, I mean, I think resource might, or recess might be really important. Lunchtime, I mean, I guess I would, I would not go overboard on that instructional time wall because I think maybe that kid may have, yeah, you know, if you're not, we talked about kids want to be in a position to learn if they're having an issue or need to have services. I think if we lose an hour of instructional time, so we.
I would agree just from experience, if a kid gets pulled for a band, let's say they're struggling those fun times, bands, you know, P.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, that's what might be hitting for the day, so I get it though. I, you know, it's, it's how do you balance, but, well, and again, we, you know, we're in the, I mean, we are, we, we're here for the whole child, but we also want to educate the child, so. And you know, if they need to provide services maybe after school, then that's something that we can discuss for them. But again, we're really trying to make sure kids are not falling behind, yeah.
The frequency of such visits?
It really, that varies from child to child. Very, I would say, yeah, once a week. Sometimes just thirty minutes a week. I mean, it just depends, depends on what has been.
If it is in school, can they do, or can they do before and after school at school location? Or does that have to go off site?
I think, yeah, it would need to be about transportation if the child can provide, find out what the hours are of that Centerstone employee as well, see if that's available. Alright, so, oh, I went, sorry. Alright, so Meridian Health Services. So RCS partners, Meridian Health Services provide health services in each of our eleven student buildings. The primary goal of Richmond Community Schools' health services is protecting the health and well-being of all children. Richmond High School is the home to our school-based health clinic where every student has access to affordable health services. Our Meridian staff of registered nurses, nursing assistants, licensed practical nurses, medicals, and our nurse practitioner provide quality and caring service to our students on a daily basis. So just looking at some of these numbers too, here's a look at some of the clinic visits for March. Again, I also meet with Meridian Management once a month and they bring data points to, to our meetings. So and go over any sort of challenges that we may have also in, in that building. So just looking a little bit, test has part of it, but versus Richmond High School. So that's again, just for March. And then I can also submit that we have, we have the numbers when we had our own nurses. So we have years of nurse clinic visits. So I'm hoping that this also, the nurse clinic visits are also helping also with our attendance, hoping that a student is being treated in our clinics and then maybe that is helping some of our attendance. So I'm kind of looking at some of those data points as well to see if that's helping us. So some of the strengths that we have with Meridian, again, the mental health, they have a mental health component, the RHS Health Clinic, they also provide school nurses. And then our monthly meetings with supports, with reports from management, and again, it is free. There is no cost to Richmond Community Schools. So that's been really powerful for us also. Any questions about Centerstone or Meridian? Okay.
I have one quick question. The Meridian funding, have they made any comments?
Meridian right now.
That's grant funded, I believe.
Right now, they are still using Medicaid. Right now, they are still using Medicaid for their services. And then they would eventually love to be able to expand.
Some of our health services. But no worries about.
As of right now, no. We've talked about some legislation. And then somebody had also asked about our A D Ds and things like that. So that's, I also have some information about that, that I've gotten some, some data points from our, we meet monthly also for you guys. That we can share that information as well. Alright, so our next provider that we're gonna talk about, our partner, is Communities and Schools. So during the May twenty-second, school board meeting, Communities and Schools shared information with board members about struggles that they were experiencing. So again, just go back and look at, Communities and Schools provides tiers of support to surround students with a community of support. Empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. And two of the struggles that C I S has had recently, or well, last, last year, were employees in communication. So some things that we wanted just to look at is that right now Communities and Schools, their, their objective is to meet with individual students and school-wide outcomes. By doing that, they look at improvement in academic improvements, improvement in attendance, behavior and in school climate. And then also they have three tiers of services. So the tier one, school-wide services, those are like the food bank, hygiene products, school supplies, shoes, glasses, maybe. Just, it depends on the child and what they have. And then tier two and tier three are some more targeted programs and groups or individual support for those kids. So that's how C I S is, is developed into it. And so C I S has struggled a little bit this year with us. They have not been able to fill some of their site coordinator positions at R C S. As of today, we have openings at Charles Elementary School, Vale Elementary School, Hibbert Program Building and Dennis Middle School. And you may also remember several months ago, R C S made an addendum to increase the hours of site coordinators at Charles, Crestdale and Westview. From twenty hours a week to thirty hours per week. Charles Elementary School has not had a site coordinator at all this school year. The site coordinator at Vale resigned just before winter break. The site coordinator at Dennis resigned in January. The site coordinator at Hibbert was hired in January and resigned in February. A site coordinator at C Y S was hired and then resigned and resigned. And since then, retired teacher superstar Brian Sane has been hired to be the site coordinator at C Y S. So we're very excited to have him join our team. So looking at some of this, these are some of the goals, oh, it moved around, anyway. These are some of the goals that C I S has as far as numbers. Looking at, and this is for, this is for the numbers at Crestdale, I just pulled up at school just to look up. I want to Mr. Leoria, I'll go see this. Okay, again, the goal for C I S, they set goals for all of our schools. So we have site plans at every one of the schools and who has, who has C I S. And the goal for Crestdale is to have ninety-six percent improved attendance and improved behaviors and improved climate. And then their goal also is to have thirty students case managed. So when we look at that. There, this is, that was the same, this is what it was supposed to, I'm sorry, let's get rid of the other one. So here's some of the numbers. So currently from the list that C I S has shared with me, I received this from Ms. Scott from Communities and Schools. And the students that are case managed, we have twenty-seven students that are case managed. And from those meetings that we were talking about, that I meet periodically with the principal and the team. I noticed after several meetings that many of the at-risk students of R C S were not being case managed by C I S. So this is just an example, some of those high-risk students, maybe those ones that may have habitual truancy. That may be four attend, four grades, lots of office referrals. Maybe D C S has been to the house several times, maybe handle with care has been happening. So those kids are considered high-risk. So when we talk about high-risk, those kids have those attributes of being a potential high school dropout. And again, some of these little kiddos are second, third graders, I mean, God love them. Meaning they just, just have some point, data points on there that we need to keep our track, keep an eye on. The kids in the yellow maybe have a mental risk, but they may be already seeing, maybe seeing a service provider, maybe they're seeing Centerstone, maybe they have Meridian. Maybe they have a mentor, maybe C I S is a case managed student of them. But the blue, those in those meetings, we decided that those students do not have any of those attributes. But the current support that we have of Crestdale, for example, is that seventy-seven percent of the students are being case managed. Do not have any of those attributes as far as being a potential high school dropout or having struggles in high school. So when you look at the data points that we have there, we have, when we look at those monthly meetings, there are thirty-three students that have been identified as at-risk at Crestdale just by themselves. So fifty-seven percent of those students, of the thirty-three students, those students are considered high-risk. They have habitual truancy, D C, you know, something that's got several data points that are really high. And then forty-two percent are moderate. So we don't want, I mean, I know, C I S is very important, we just don't want any of the students to be case managed. For Richmond Community Schools by C I S, they should have some sort of risk level to be, to be case managed. So when we're looking at that, during that, so when I met with Communities and Schools, Wayne County Executive Director Becky Murray. I've met with her several times, but during our February meeting, I shared a list of at-risk students that R C S students have. I was concerned that many of the students were not being case managed by Communities and Schools. Ms. Murray asked that I come to the C I S staff meeting to talk with all of the R C S coordinators. During the staff meeting, I shared a list of four hundred and fourteen R C S students marked as having a high or moderate risk. Of having factors of being a potential high school dropout, whether absences, academics, office referrals, home life, et cetera. Of the four hundred and fourteen R C S students on the list, only fifty-four were being case managed by Communities and Schools. So on March twenty-fifth, C I S sent me a list of two hundred and thirty-nine students that were being case managed by C I S. And that's for the whole district. I reviewed the list and noticed that several of the case managed students on their list are not students who fall within our at-risk attributes. So Richmond Community Schools, just going by the numbers, we have an enrollment of four thousand four hundred and thirty-one students. And per our agreement with Communities and Schools, ten percent of our students who fall in the at-risk attributes. Should be receiving case managed services from Communities and Schools. So Richmond Community Schools should have at least four hundred and thirty-one at-risk students being monitored for academic improvements. Attendance improvements, decreased office referrals, et cetera. So taking a look at that, these are some, see, these are some of the things that we have tried to help with Communities and Schools. As far as of those two data points that they were worried about, that they were concerned about back in last spring. So they were concerned on employees, we have shared some of the C I S job postings to our social media pages and Parents Square are trying to help recruit. Possibly some site coordinators. And then we are also, I feel that communication has improved. We've had in-person and virtual meetings, then Communities and Schools, Mrs. Markworth has joined some of those also. And also emails and phone calls with Communities and Schools. So those are just some, some data points to look at. And then just as far as with the Crestdale, Crestdale is a K through, pre-K through a four building, there are three hundred and ninety-five students. And then at the beginning of the year, again, they said they need thirty, and in theory, you need thirty-nine students to be trapped at Richmond, at Crestdale. If we meet that ten percent MOU agreement with, with Communities and Schools.
How do they typically identify their at-risk students? I mean, if you have a list and you say, these are the kids, shouldn't they get that at the beginning of the year at some point? Shouldn't we be providing that information?
There is, well, we've been meeting in those monthly meetings, but yes, in the spring, we did go over that list again. But I think it's getting that list of who those, who those students were, took a little bit of time. I wasn't aware that, I wasn't aware of who the case managed students were in some of those meetings. I did receive some information. And again, it's been that some of our schools haven't had the C I S coordinators as well.
But how would they not, I mean, how was it presumed that they were getting that list before the meetings?
They've been getting referral forms.
Okay.
So that is, it's on a referral basis, parents must fill out a form to be in Communities and Schools.
So do we have those parent forms filled out and we give them a name? So if we give Communities and Schools a name, then we are already on the referral portion?
We've been doing that in those, in those monthly meetings, so we're like, hey, listen, this kid has this many data point issues. Can we, can, can, you know, I need C I S to get a referral to this.
I don't think that naturally happens, just as like building principals going over data with teachers.
It seems like this kind of isn't exactly.
It's not, that's right, and it needs, it's, it's not a, it's not a best practice right now.
But it seems like we bear as much of the burdens they do kind of, because we have the data and they have the service, so I don't know how that best looks.
Well, and, and right now, they're, they're not able to meet some of them, because some of the students that they are meeting. It's just some of those students that they are doing case management with, I don't know how they can get data points as far as improving attendance or improving. Because their attendance is pretty good. So I, I have not seen the data points as far as for semester one of what those look like. Actually, actually, she did, she gave it to me per, per district, but they, again, tier one services for Communities and Schools are amazing. So I mean, they're reaching a lot of kids, a lot of kids are getting snacks, a lot of kids are getting those, those basic need services. My concern with my department, with my office, is I wanna make sure that those at-risk students are getting services. And so.
But they're just waiting on a referral? I mean, I don't know that they have a mechanism to find those kids per se, other than.
Well, and during that meeting, like I was showing them how to pull up in Power School, these are at-risk students. So if that's, if there's a way that we can start the school year off and say, like, so like when I met with them, I gave them each the list. Here are at-risk kids.
And being on the Communities and Schools board, we have kind of identified some of the, some of the concerns are, could be onboarding of the new C I S coordinators. And training of them, that they're just not getting the training that they need coming into the position of how to access Power School and pulling that on. So we've kind of talked a little bit about some potential solutions with having a mentor, shadowing other coordinators before they start in the building. So that's a potential concern.
And that's on the Communities and Schools side.
Correct.
R C S.
Correct.
Communities and Schools.
Yes.
And when Mrs. James Baker said it too, again, we are so very appreciative of the Communities and Schools services and supports in those, especially schools, especially at the tier one level. That we have had site coordinators, I think the challenge, as we all have understood, is where are those site coordinators?
Well, we're, and we're paying, we're paying a significant amount of money for this service. But I just, I'm not sure, I see, I mean, if, if it weren't all to be for just per MOU, it were to be all for tier one, it's doing great.
So about that, yeah, because I thought we were gonna be getting a credit for any services that were not rendered. So will that happen again for this year? Will we be getting another credit for?
Yes, yes, we've been in conversations with Mrs. Murray, she did send over some information to us about potential credit. We've gotta work on those numbers a little bit, just to see if the numbers of the credit match with the lack of services that we've had at many of our buildings this year.
Yes, we're still paying, just so we can, sure we get that credit as well.
And I would like to say too, that even though we haven't had services at those buildings, then we have been still meeting the needs. As you see, our attendance rates are going up, so the needs of the students aren't going unmet in the absence of the C I S service. It's just the Richmond Community Schools is taking on that responsibility. And Bridget doing a lot of that legwork with building principals, reaching out to her and saying, hey, this is what we need. So the, the students are, the needs are being met, it's just not through Communities and Schools.
How, have they shared why they can't retain employees?
They're going through strategic planning right now, I do think one of the pieces is the pay for the site coordinators. So I know that they're looking at potentially some of those solutions through strategic planning, but I know pay is definitely a concern.
Do we know what they started their site coordinating?
Fourteen an hour.
Fourteen dollars.
I was just looking at our.
How many total site coordinators are we supposed to have?
Eleven.
Eleven.
One in each.
Right, I just can't figure out the business model, how they make money, you know, just looking at what our original contract was.
For thirty hours a week, except Dennis, a high school, I think test for thirty-three hours a week, just because of the numbers, excuse me. And then again, we increased the hours, we, we, we did have twenty hours per week at Crestdale. Westview and Charles, and we increased that, I'm hoping to see that would help maybe with some, you know.
People just in terms of experience too, right? We wanna make sure with our transient population that we don't have a student moving from Crestdale to Charles who doesn't have a coordinator. And so they might have depended upon the services that they were receiving in our buildings that have a coordinator there most of the time to a building that doesn't have a coordinator. So we really wanted to make that service equitable across the district with Communities and Schools, but it just has not been with the staffing. I would say six of our buildings, four of the buildings consistently have had a coordinator all year, two have been in and out and the other ones have not.
Any other questions about C I S?
And then the, the commitment, the cost commitment that we made with C Y S.
Hundred twenty-seven thousand for this year. So essentially that's a divided by ten payments, so we pay a flat fee monthly to them whether we're provided the service or not.
Alright, so our last group, then I'm gonna talk about handle with care. So this is a notification system that Mr. Stevens may need to be more aware of. And that enables law enforcement and other first responders to notify schools when a child has been in the scene of a traumatic, possible traumatic event. This could be a domestic violence, it could be a car accident, you name it. So we just, again, each morning we'll receive a notification from Deputy Sheriff Alan Moore. And all of our school principals receive that, and then we're keeping track of those data points as well. So just looking at the number of kids, we have four hundred and thirty-five students that were in, in, so far this school year, again, we're only in April right now. But looking at the number of students, and then you can look at by grade level as well of some of the kids that have had a handle with care notification this year. Again, this started in September, I wasn't on the mailing list in all of August, so I found out about it from Mr. Richard, he shares, I was like, ooh, I wanna know more. That's another data point, I wanna get, see what we can do to help kids. So, so this is from September to April. And then just looking at this also by school, we had to see, I would like to see that there's been two hundred and fourteen kids with car accidents, but I don't think it's been that at Richmond High School, as you can see, it's a spike. So some students, I'm not sure, again, we do not know the reason behind it. Maybe that student has been in communication with probation officer, I'm not sure. We just get the name of the student, we don't get the why. Do they all get familiar at all with that, Mr. Stevens? Okay, so again, that's just a breakdown for, for school. And then, and then the number of students, so three hundred and five students have had this one time. But look, you can see there's, there's one student on there that hasn't had handle with care fifteen times already this year. So again, those are the, these kiddos on this far right side, or even the four plus, those are ones we need to keep our eye on. And find out what's going on in that child's life that they're being affected with so many different things of trauma. So just trying to keep, again, a pulse on, on these data points to see what we can do to help kiddos. So again, with our community partners together. Oh, I'm so sorry, go back.
I'm, I still don't understand handle with care, exactly what it is, like, is it a program?
It's, I'm sorry, it's a partnership, so Stephanie Baker and Josh Amix are on the committee for this handle with care. It's been going on for a couple of years now. And so it just, it gives us, it gives school administrators, so we know if it's, when we get that list, we know that, listen, this child has gone through something in the last twenty-four hours. And so we can make sure that we have trauma-informed decisions for this child possibly, or just be, be aware, alert. And maybe this child may be going through something today at school.
So you're saying it's kind of a committee?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, there, there are contacts for this group, but the handle with care is a, is a, it's kind of like, it's a computer database. That the law enforcement has, and it sends it to all the, to all of our school districts. So.
Gotcha.
They are able to put a student's name in, and I don't know how, I don't know how they know. And some of them, some of them are, and some, some of the lists, the kids, they don't have a school name for this, so I look up those kids, say, are they in our district? Because they may not know what school they go to, and then I'm like, hey, listen, this child is at Vale. And I let them pull me into board, it's like, hey, listen, this child had something happen last, you know, and let the staff know, just be aware to keep their eye on this kid.
And this is an extension.
Always look at a morning email each.
Each morning.
If one of their students have had some sort of interaction.
Fire.
House fire enforcement, yeah.
This is an extension or a future of Wayne County safety.
That's right.
That is made up of law enforcement, first responders, schools, administration, the whole nine yards that meet monthly, the probation department is included. And so if Curtis Wright has experienced a domestic setback this evening, and he arrives at school, right, his head down. And it's just distraught, we definitely. And and it's just all distraught. Uh we definitely uh notify Curtis's back staff.
I just didn't understand the functionality of even how.
And again, it's just to make sure that we have support systems in place with those kiddos.
Do we have the mechanism to find out? I mean, like the kids that are twelve, thirteen, fourteen times. But do you know what happened?
Like, I do not. So I'll I'll give it to the principal, like when we meet in that meeting, I'm like, hey, listen, here's another one for this for this month. You know, and they could say, oh, you know, they ran away.
And the training for principals, they really encourage us not to try to find out, at least especially running a student, like what has happened. It's really more of just to let the staff know, hey, we need to handle Curtis Wright with care today because something has happened, but it's not really kind of what's happening.
I just was looking at it from a, you know, it, the principal might figure out what's going on, but then. What steps does it really need to be?
Several families that had fires. So I mean, that, I mean, that goes fast. We had the whole neighborhood, like, hey, we know this child goes to. Crestdale. We need, what can we get? And so, you know, CIS has helped, or, you know, other other partners have helped Red Cross. And then make sure, you know, what can we do to make sure those kids can still come back to school, see their friends and, you know.
President Bickering's question, question, just for clarity, uh law enforcement, first responders are included in the initial submission. So they're well aware. We're required to do a report. We're required to do a submission. So and then it gets to you. And then and then goes into automatic play at that point, so.
And it seems to be working. It's nice. We're hoping. Alright, and so this is my second to last, I promise. Um so community partners, so together with all of our community partners, we have the opportunity to change the life trajectory. For Richmond students. So again, without all these partners, I mean, we are making some changes um slowly but surely. And um I'm I'm very excited for the for the for the challenge and the outcome that our students um will be receiving in the next couple of years. So do they have any additional questions?
I have a question. So speaking of community partners.
I'm redoing our sign. Yeah, so it's in my office. You block, yeah, it's in my office right now.
I was like, actually. No, I was just gonna say, I I would like to see, and maybe we have it, I'm sure you do, the the sort of missing piece with CIS. Exactly, you know, that piece, right? We know tier one seems to be really working and. Um I always think it's it's great. We could probably even beef it up even more. Um but. Those like real items for tier two, tier three, what aren't they providing? And then what are our options?
Well, and they have a lot of tools in their tool belt to help us with that. I just think we just need to try to um, you know. Dial in and that we're helping the students that need to be. Receiving the help.
Yeah.
So um and that's, you know, that's with any community partner, that's with Sinnerstone, that's with Meridian, that's with anybody right now.
I guess my question is with Meridian and Sinnerstone, social Meridian. Are there things that they can pick up and sort of pull in that maybe CIS can't staff correctly? And handle it, like that's kind of.
When our school counselors have been very instrumental in our secondary buildings.
Right. If we use that, let's just say that money to train. Teachers, to give extra training to our school counselors, to get like whatever it might be, you know, one school might not need a full time. Just, you know, how can we utilize those dollars that we're not, if they if they can't sort of figure it out? Right, cause that that can be the answer. There should be money there somewhere for them to operate. Like, cause that just doesn't make sense. Um but how can we? How can we make it work? And it needs to work.
Well, and can data share in that space?
School year, like we can't keep going through.
I mean, but like, I mean, it's been really nice to get the monthly reports from the other organizations. It'd be nice if we had, you know. Someone to have, maybe that would help. But um and I don't know, I don't know if they'll, I don't know, I don't know what the next steps are right now, but um.
I think just also to uh to respond to the President Bickering's question, I think the first step is just having consistent presence. Uh the our schools um with with regard to psychologists, uh because as uh this Mark I moved it to, uh we've only had four schools. That have had consistent services uh throughout the course of the year, uh whereas the others have been on all four, not at all. And so I think that to that point, and I think uh I know Mrs. Hayes, Hayes Baker uh referenced it. Despite uh any more challenges, we've added AR support service. The RCS support staff. I know last year, uh I shared with you all that we will be revising our administrative protocols. Uh and we we're introducing intentionality uh with with such protocols. We've revised Mrs. Hayes Baker's job description, uh titled her role, uh and she has definitely embraced it. And that was a protracted data for us with each respective entity so as to inform our decisions. Uh and then there's been a lot of flow through, flow of follow-through with our RCS support staff. That allows us to continue to improve on attendance, improve on disciplinary responses and trauma behavior, uh health services. Again, I just I commend those uh RCS, that staff that work and partner with um our local entities. To get it done for our kids, uh the social emotional support services that we provide, uh second down in the county. And I think I'll give say to anyone else around the state, uh for some of the challenges that we encounter here. In the eastern Indiana Christian local house.
And that's what I'd wanna see, how can we support?
Well, if there are more partners out there that are gonna help us.
Yeah, right. Like, I think it's like, you know, how do we think out about that box? What really break it out? What is that worth being in?
Well, and CI is also the thing for providing some mentor, you know, probably organize that too. And that's something that we had here a while ago. We had the study like program for a while. But it's um, you know, we, again, we've had different organizations, the Pro Dads has have approached us, trying to do a group. And so we're looking into that maybe also for the fall, um that they're looking at, that maybe wanting to do a before-school program. So it's just a another opportunity that may come to us too.
Mrs. Hayes Baker, would you argue that those students, uh those middle degree school students who are in need are having their needs met socially emotionally? When it comes to the service that we provide.
I would say some. I I I sadly, I am, I'll say that um. There, I would say we're not getting enough, I'm we're not, we're not getting a full start right now. I know there's there's some students, even the services that we're providing. That are not getting their needs met, and that, I don't want to try.
Are you good? Yeah.
Just it's, I just know there's some kids that are really struggling, and then we have the opportunity and the and the funds and the ability to help these kiddos. And as adults, I hate to see that we're failing them because we're, we should be in their corner and helping them.
The reality, you're not failing them necessarily. You're providing all the services that we have at our availability to give to them. But the reality of it is, some things we just cannot control, you cannot control. Just keep doing what you're doing.
You're right, you're right. Our toolbox is Richmond School's toolbox to help kids is stellar. So um and it's, and we're doing some, we're doing some really great things. So I'm 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 really proud of all of our partners and all of our agencies that are helping us and our staff. I mean, they're amazing.
But as I shared with you before, and that's why it's your response, doesn't blame you in the role. Because although we're performing at a typically stellar level, you still want more, and we all still want more for kids, and so thank you.
So I'd like to know, uh for anyone listening in the audience, um or watching, whatever, um who wants to help? Who wants to mentor, how can they get a hold of us? What are the opportunities?
If anyone would like to mentor, they need to contact community schools. Susan Miller is their um mentor coordinator, and she's fantastic. So um I would say definitely with her, she can get students, I mean, we have a few weeks of school left, but we'll take, yeah, we'll take anything we can get. Some of these kids need some positive role model. If anyone would like to help with any sort of monetary donations or school supplies or codes or. You name it. Um we can al- we can also um accommodate that as well here at Richmond High School. So the numbers on the on the on the board there, but. Nine seven three 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 zero zero, the holder to connect to the right person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two consent items, five point oh one, a thirty-five point zero eight.
Madam President, I move to approve the consent items with the addendum that have been presented to us and to the public. Second.
Some motion by Member Stevens, and a second by a member for Yaga. Any questions or comments? Um all those in favor, vote say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Um moving to action, I'd uh. First up, we have uh six point oh one, which is donations. So um.
I move to approve six point oh one, their action items, the nomination of every member presented outside.
That was a motion by Member Stevens, a second by a member for Brian. Any questions or comments? Say thank you. Um donations are always so appreciated. Um I just. Yeah, seeing all the different groups, seeing people really support, um so total uh. Just seven thousand fifty dollars. Um just very much appreciated.
By my count, it was thirty-one individual donors.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Pretty awesome.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Um all those in favor, voting aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Passes five to zero. Um up next, six point oh two, Baxter HVAC agreement with Griner Brothers, Premier Brothers.
I move to approve six point zero two, the Baxter HVAC agreement with Griner Brothers is presented. Second.
Some motion by Member Stevens, a second by Member Brian. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Vote passes five to zero. Um item six point oh three, food service management RFP award.
And the fact that I'm hungry right now, that's dealing with food, I move to approve six point oh three, the food services management RFP award is presented.
That was a motion from Member Stevens, a second by a member for Brian. Any questions or comments? Um I have one question. I noticed that um. We had sort of a second runner-up that was close to. Uh what we currently is with Charter Wells. I just didn't know if there was any outstanding, if it was, you know, Charter Wells was. Just still the clear winner or. They seem to provide everything we need. Is there anything that they, we wish they do provide that we don't get?
They said Charter Wells.
At Charter Wells, yeah.
Uh I know that uh Member Brian and myself, uh Mrs. Stolpa, Mrs. Stolpa, Mrs. Scout, uh along with Mr. Jones. Uh and Mrs. Swapper reviewed uh such process. And Mrs. Scout, if you don't mind, he says, some of the operations, if you could. Join us to share in the response to Member Piggory's question.
Yeah, so um this is for food services that are pertinent to students. So um when you evaluate a proposal, that has to be your first and foremost process. It has to be approved by the IDOE. So the other things are not something that they consider worthy of evaluation. In fact, there were things and proposals that were offered that we had to remove from evaluation. Um and that's simply because it's supposed to be about the the school lunch program and the breakfast programs. And so while they can offer us a multitude of things, and we can pick and choose what we do. As in a kind of a, just a natural part of the relationship, um it is something that, as far as like. The evaluation of contract, you have to focus that on the student programming. So um do they offer extra things? We take advantage of most of the programs that they offer. In fact, they are building new programs with us. And so we are doing new things for them. Um but, and Mr. Kaneg is here, and he is our regional uh director. He has been here, um actually as our Richmond director, um twice. We have worked together directly. But he is now in the regional role. And um so if you have questions for him, he's available. But those extra things, we do take advantage of. And so um the great thing about Mr. Kaneg and the team at the high school. Is that anytime they're thinking about what might work here, they're throwing it out. And we're just taking a look at it, we're evaluating all the possibilities. And if it's responsible to do so, a lot of times they'll do that. They even listen to our ideas. So lots of times, um principals will be like, hey, can we do this? And they've even found ways to make it happen within um the school lunch program. So I just want to say thank you for the work that they've done so far. Um and for a proposal that spoke for itself, and that was very nice. Um and the others that that proposed were all good proposals, and it was a lot of work to go through. Um but that's, I think, answering your question.
Great. Um so all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Vote passes six to zero. Um item six point oh four, uh the summer athletic camp brochure. I move to approve the um item six point oh four, the twenty twenty-five summer athletic camp brochure as presented.
Second.
It's a motion by Member Stoltz, a second by Member Stevens. Any questions or comments?
I think implicit in your approval of the brochure is you're approving the camp experiences that are listed in the brochure, are you not?
Yes, because I think it's going to press, right, too? We needed to get it. Um great. Um I just wanted to say, I think these are always a great, great experience. But like, you know, returning participants, you know, community kids that just wanna try something out and. You know, parents don't have to always shell out a ton of money, and then they go with one thing. So I just always think it's great. The kids always have a return.
I appreciate the effort to keep it either no cost or low cost. Um and again, um it. It it's an opportunity to dabble, I guess, you know, maybe you've never played softball, or guess what? We've got an opportunity for you to do that. And so it's just kind of a low commitment, so to speak. It's just a little, it's a same work.
Yes. Great. Um all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Vote passes things to zero. Uh moving on to policy review and updates. Um first up. Seven point oh one, which is policy sixty-three twenty, purchasing first reading.
Madam President, I move to approve, excuse me, I move to move policy sixty-three twenty for purchasing to second reading.
I'll second. That was a motion by Member Stevens, a second by Member Stoltz. Any questions or comments?
Um just one, it's not been formatted into the current policies. I guess I'd like to see. I prefer to see what the final policy looked like before I move it to second reading personally. And I know that's the technicality, but.
Got it, because this was the new one, I believe.
I think we took it from it. I have borrowed it from another corporation.
Yeah.
And I think it's of the policy span. I just, I, the expectation was it. Look like their other policies. And I think it will eventually, but at least when it gets to this level, I'd like it to be that format.
Right, that's what you're saying.
Cause we.
It does look different.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just the wrong policy.
Could we make sure that we have this one, Mr. Mops, sixty-three twenty purchasing formatted?
We can try, we can try to do that, but what we do is we'll send this off to Neola, and then they.
Okay.
And then they fix it, but if you're not gonna vote on it, I mean, I can try to see if I can make it look like the others, just.
Are you okay to move it to second and we?
Like, they won't, Neola won't. Like, once it's approved, then we send it off to Neola when they format it to look like the rest. But I can go ahead and see if I can.
Or do you want us to format it so it's kind of what we think it's gonna look like for second reading? I mean.
Why is Neola formatting our policies?
The it's all, all they're doing is, all they do is like, put the indentations where they need to be. And they make them all look the same, make them all look alike. Um it's the service that they provide us.
So, and a minor detail, I I guess I did not know that they had that kind of level of editing, if you will.
But we we do all the editing and we give it to them. They don't change anything that we've, we've asked them to fix and then they just um.
So if we approve it and they make a, even I'm, I mean, they're just making formatting changes. I guess that's okay, but but then it it may look as it just. This is how I would prefer things be done, I guess, but it's fine.
It's good to know that they will make changes. I would just, I mean, I would ask that we just get to put this. To make it look like the rest of our policies for.
I'll do what I can.
Second reading and then, or we can discuss it too at the next policy meeting.
I mean, the policy is fine. I just, I think Neola's now, my question is Neola's involvement. I mean, I I know they want to, I I. I I I'm not sure why they're doing that, I guess, or why we need that service. Um but but that's for another discussion, so.
Okay.
I I think it's, I think it's just like when we, when we make edits in the policy meeting, we cross things out and it shows red and we highlight things in green. And what they do is they just take out the red and they take off the green. So it's kind of the same thing. They just kind of uh take off all those editing marks. And format it.
So they do all it.
Yeah, we we set it off and they they fix it for us. That's part of the service that that they provide us.
I guess that's one way. Fine. Um and I, that's something I think we should do in the House personally.
All right.
What do you think we can get this one formatted, at least our template that Neola uses?
It would be my understanding that if if it is, if this is. Has to move to second reading, that it gives Mr. Mops time to format it uh to be aligned with, you know, how our others will see. And if that is not like, this is just my opinion, if that is, if if that still doesn't meet what we would want our standards to look like. We can still table, put it off until it does meet that standard. Before before approving it on a final review.
Would that give you?
Yeah, I think my question is, I mean, we have, we have edits in all these policies.
Yeah.
And we're gonna vote to approve, I'm guessing most of them or all of them. But they won't actually change until we send it to an outside contractor to have them edit it and then get it back. And then. Are we a hundred percent guaranteed that they made the correct? I mean, I, it just seems kind of ridiculous uh to have that. Service, I mean, it's like you're sending out something you can do yourself. I I don't quite know why we would do that, but.
So be it.
Definitely here. And. So all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Both passes six zero. Um item seven point oh two, which is policy seventy five forty point oh two, web content apps and services first reading.
I move to move policy seventy five forty point oh two, web content apps and services to second reading.
Second.
Some motion by member Stoltz and a second by member Stevens. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Both passes six to zero. Item seven point oh three, which is policy eighty two ten, school calendar first reading.
Mad President, I. Make a motion that we move policy eighty two ten, the school calendar, second reading.
Second. Some motion by member Stevens, uh. Second by member Stoltz. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Both passes six to zero. Um seven point oh four, which is policy eighty five, eighty four fifty two. Automated external defibrillators AED first reading. I'd like to make a motion to move policy eighty four fifty two automated external defibrillators AED to second reading.
Second.
Motion by members, second by member Brian. Any questions or comments?
Um I just wanted to say later uh in the meeting, we'll talk about how many AEDs and just get a proper confirmation and vote with four.
Um all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay. Both passes six to zero. And seven point oh five, which is policy eighty six fifteen, idling school buses and other idling vehicles on school property first reading.
I make a motion that we move policy eighty six fifteen, the item, school buses and other idling vehicles on school property, second reading is presented.
Second.
Some motion by member Stevens, a second by member Stoltz. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Both passes six to zero. Uh seven point oh six. Which is the send policy eighty seven sixty, student accident insurance first reading.
I'll make the motion that we um move policy eighty seven sixty, student accident insurance to second reading.
Sorry. Some motion by member Stoltz and a second by member Brandon. Um any questions or comments? All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Both passes six to zero. Um item seven point oh seven, which is policy fifty five seventeen oh one, fully second reading.
I believe that we approve policy fifty five seventeen point zero lines, the length on second reading. As approval.
I'll second that.
Some motion by member Stevens, a second by member Stoltz. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment, you know, we heard in public commentary earlier today about maybe uh making sure that. When somebody does look it up, that is more readily available for the public to read. And also if there are discrepancy in matching. Uh policy numbers in one site is to another, that we get those so that. We're on the same page, like a better expression, so that. This policy number that goes out to the public is the same, that is included in any other uh service.
I've made notes to um actually ask, uh Mr. Mops, if you wouldn't mind, uh I'm guessing you were taking notes already, but if if not. Uh going back and listening to the the specifics, it'd be nice to have that aligned.
Uh I'd be pleased to welcome.
Okay. Thanks.
Um I would, do we need to bounce this back to the policy committee to just have one? More run through, just to make sure that is, that is uh. Reference policies are correct and the associated administrative guidelines are correct and possibly even tweaking the. The language about the website access. Already, I mean, I'm just asking.
I will.
Because I'm not, I I can't, I'm not able to really do it live. Tonight. Without a lot of digging.
I would just like to go back through to reference them. We definitely can.
Yeah, I mean, fine with that.
If you want to hold this over to your, our next policy meeting, I can review the statutory authorities. If you have a summary of what they are and if they appear to be. Not appropriate, then the committee can review it.
I definitely agree with that. I will withdraw my motion.
And I seconded, I think I did. I'll withdraw that. Then do we have to?
Yeah.
It's just. Those stuff, okay.
Yeah, just give us time to give another look see.
Okay, that will be brought back to the next policy meeting, which. Is Tuesday, May. Okay, um. So that means us. Uh is the president's update. Um so I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. Um we've talked about several times. Good old SB two eighty seven, uh which is uh refers to Parkinson's school board races. Thought it was dead, Dr. Right. Um so it has been suddenly revived. Um so uh and this is the policy that basically makes school board elections partisan. Uh which basically means that um candidates, uh so when we run, we either have to um. Share our political party affiliation. Um we can run as independent or we can elect not to disclose. Um. And. If there are several caveats, if we run under a certain party, if let's say we double base the board and. There needs to be an appointment, a caucus would be done by that political party. So if you are registered Republican. That we, the school board would not feel the seat of that school board member, the Republican Party would. Um if you are. Board member who is vacating and you aren't independent or you don't share your political party, then the school board, just like we do now. Would interview and appoint the person. Um so um as a school board, we haven't really talked about. What we would do. Um you know, this is, you know. They've been trying to pass legislature for several years. I think this is the closest. Um I do know that the author of the. Um bill dissented on it and uh they thought it might be dead, but he. withdrew his.
He withdrew his, he withdrew his objection.
Yes. Uh so it's should be voted, get voted on probably tomorrow or Thursday.
I think they may have done this afternoon.
Did they?
I don't know.
I looked for it before he came and.
I I I couldn't tell, but Terry's, if you notice, Terry issued an alert to the.
Didn't say that.
This morning and uh.
I mean, I saw her alert this morning, but I hadn't seen anything coming. So.
I don't know what happened. I did send an email to her, sent her. Rein.
Yes.
Reinforcing our request.
That's what I was gonna say. Um we can call in tax, senator Rotts, and share our thoughts, whether you're for or against it. Um and it's just always good to share. Um and then we will, depending on what happens, if it's signed in the law. Uh we'll have further conversations and. Figure out what needs to happen.
To pick up from a prior comment, I challenged our representatives to at least articulate one reason that might. Justify from a perspective of betterment of student outcomes in the educational environment, any other aspects. Of having this type of political. Parts and affiliation. And I got no response from anybody.
I have not heard any good things either. Um the, oh, the one other caveat in this policy or this bill is. It actually modifies annual pay for school board members from two thousand dollars a year. Um which generally is split up quarterly to ten percent. It did not, an amount not to exceed ten percent of the lowest paid teacher, which in theory. Would take our compensation up. That is not something that any of us are here for. Um uh you know, I don't like to. Right, I don't believe we have to, I I don't know.
I haven't seen that.
To vote that in. Um I I do think that is. Probably good in if school districts have a situation where. The balance is off. And it really kind of goes against teachers. Maybe their school board members, it. It would appear that they make more that sort of percentage of what they make, but um. I just find it an odd thing to put into a bill that raises.
And and I'm not sure how it's gonna play out, because you know your compensation is based on your policy, your policy is based on the statute. The statute allows not only. An an annual stipend, but also a per diem for intensive meetings. So we'll just have to see what.
And I don't think, I haven't seen anything that talks about any of the um stipends for.
I I didn't either.
For any of the the meetings. So. Um so that was fun. And then the other one that was signed into law was SB one. Um which lowers taxes. Uh however, it really is going to hit schools hard. Um you know, not just us, all Wayne County schools. I think every school, there might be three schools in the state that don't get hit for whatever reason. Um I know that. Now that this is signed in the law, you know, Ms. Swapp, Ms. Swapp will sort of really look at our numbers to see how this is going to affect us. From Leminary, I know that it's RCS loses roughly one point eight million dollars over the next three years because of this bill. Um that's, you know, a little over half a million um a year, which is really gonna hit us hard. So um statewide, I. I've still seen very few numbers. The one was three hundred and seventy million. That hits. All these schools. So um I think we're gonna have to get creative some instances, um which is unfortunate, but.
Actually, the number that is verified is yes, the New York. Small English was is uh for Richmond is eight hundred and forty three thousand nine, eight hundred. Forty two thousand nine hundred approximately. So that's not over the three years.
Okay, good.
So that's a little better, but you better realize that we're all waiting for the second shoe to drop. Because all of this was done. And it didn't necessarily impact state revenue, because their property taxes need to go. For the units that are identified in the component of the rate. But before they had their two point five million dollar estimated revenue shortfall. And so now. House Bill one thousand and one, the budget itself. Could have some surprises and I doubt it. They would be very pleasant for any of the impacted parties that are surprised. So. So we'll just have to wait and see. They still say they'll adjourn tomorrow. Next day, their Tuesdays, their.
Stay tuned. Um. Does anyone have any questions or suggestions about? Um. Moving on to open forum. Uh so I do have one thing I just wanted to bring up and then I'll open the floor. Um. A couple of things. Uh. Just kidding. Oh, sorry, AEDs. So we had talked about with the policy eighty four fifty two, um the automated defibrillators. Um I believe we talked at the policy meeting about, you know, what as a school board and corporation. You know, how many do we need? Do we have a thought as where we want to put those? What is the cost? Um you know, you know, Hazel Baker sort of said that she had some information, um but I just wanted to bring it here to kind of gauge uh, you know. I think one of the examples is if one is over and the band is practicing. Um and there's. Maybe one inside Ternan Center, uh but there could be three teams practicing, you know, just making sure that we. Are having enough AEDs. Maybe it's overkill. I don't know. Be overkill. Um but just sort of, you know, talking that out and if anyone had any thoughts. Um and I know, I don't know if this Hazel Baker, do you have the information on AEDs? That we can just kind of.
So we currently have thirty one AEDs in the the district. So we have one AED here at central office, one at Charles, two at Crestdale. Am I going too fast? No, one at CYS, three at Dennis, one at Fairview, two at Hiver. Um I think eleven at Richmond High School. Twelve at Richmond High School, one at Star, three at, no, four at Test, one at Bale, one at Warner and one at Westview. So that's thirty one. We did walk through the high school and looking as far as an audit with, when I walked with the nursing staff. Um with Meridian and noticed that um the second floor, uh the career center did not have. An EU so that we just found some pockets maybe that we may want to investigate. We did discuss having a portable AED. Um for band, um possibly right now, um there is one located outside the athletic um trainers office, excuse me. Um and then also on the second floor, um next to the old weight room. um, next to the old weight room, uh, anyway, um, upstairs of the Ternan Center that way as well, so, um, if we looked at opportunities to have an AED outside on the brick, just worried about weather and elements. Um, there are school districts that do have an AED outside, um, we do, needs to be a, um, to be able to run to that area and my running versus. Yeah, let's go with Mr. Wrong, especially in schools, um, maybe different, so again, um, we are, we are looking into what different, um, parts of, of the AED that we can, um, our AEDs were given to us in two thousand and eleven from, um, Reed. So, um, we have been replacing those batteries and those pads, um, the shock pads, we have adult pads and, um, chop, youth pads in there too, or electroshock, um, those have been a little more difficult to find because, um, the AED machines that we have have been disconvenienced, so it has been a little, um, more difficult to find to replace those batteries. There, everything's up to date, but, um, we have been, um, um, presented with, um, an opportunity that the Centas, they do, um, some AED material and things like that, so, um, as far as looking to do that, I don't know if that's an opportunity that we wanna look at or, um, we are on the list to get a new AED from Reed, um, Health, the community health organization that will be going to the athletic office. So, um, she will have, be having another, um, portable, um, AED, um, for, you know, soccer. Just having it out there for those events as well.
So question, um, does Meridian Health Services have their own AEDs in addition or are those included in those?
Yeah, those, yeah, so those are all, so, um, all the AEDs are with Richmond Community Schools, they are equipment, I think.
She's also.
She's also. I'm sorry, but, um, and then also looking at the stop the bleed kits, also we'd like to see about making sure we have stop the bleed kits in every of the AED um, boxes as well to make sure, um, that we're in compliance with that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the audit is good. I don't know if that would even maybe a, uh, uh, call out to the athletic or the schools, just are there any locations that AEDs, I mean, let our people help us, our teachers, I mean, offhand, I mean, McBride, soccer fields, the band practice field. I mean, those distances, what I would consider, I don't know how you judge that, but, but that's, they have to run across the street, go into the building, find the AED, I mean, if, if you're in band, that's not very convenient.
I think we have agreed that we're looking at doing that portable option.
Yeah.
Um, using one of the, looking, looking at opportunities that we have, that the athletic office has, um, to, but just the portable ones that don't have to stay in. And, um, but also we have to be mindful that if they are in someone's car, for example, like the athletic trainer, we just have to make sure that those batteries stay, um, charged and, um, that we are making sure, that Meridian has been amazing as far as checking the batteries, making sure we're in compliance with all that, so that, that's been going really well, um.
Even our charter buses, I would think, you know, cause a lot of times travel to a soccer event. I mean, you know, the team, the bus sits there. I know we don't want to, but we have the two white buses. Why wouldn't we have portable on those two buses that haul our athletes to different venues across the state?
Price is roughly about two thousand dollars for.
Two, like two grand to save a kid, I mean.
For the portable two thousand.
This Hazel Baker, but just outside the box stall. The potential of reaching out to the foundations of some of the professional sports, uh, teams around the area for soccer in Indianapolis, uh, basketball, both Pacers, the Fever, the Colts, the Bengals, the Reds and everything else. If we're, they have foundations and if we can apply for grants for some of the sports team and tie it in, specifically this AED will be used for our soccer team or this AED will be used for our football team or something else. I know that there are a lot of schools around the country that benefited from those opportunities.
I wrote that down.
Yeah, that is a good one. I know the Rockies.
Well, the Wayne County Health Department, um, we've been in communications with them as far as for the stop the bleed kits as well. We're gonna see what kind of partnership we can get with, uh, Corey George and different organizations as well.
Two thousand is what you're buying, that's the price on Amazon. I'm guessing if you buy any kind of product of yours, have somebody with some kind of wholesale.
Connections or something.
Well, we'd like, in theory, we'd like to make sure the ones that we have be homes and not have to rent them.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's a new, to the board to decide, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think immediately, right, right. Getting one there, um, cause I didn't hear that right.
You do what we think about AEDs and bright portable AEDs?
Yep, Robert had one in his office that was going out to my, my TV was working, train company, so there is one there now currently.
Okay.
And I think they're looking at, at, as an additional one out of the.
We'll send it to them.
Do we think, um, so based on the count at the schools? I don't know if you looked at this, does that make sense, like population wise at each school? Do you think?
When, um, when we walked through, even with the Centas, um, worker walking through, um, the locations seem to be okay. That, that we have right now just needs to be that, that running distance to get there and back. Um, the question was the second, in outside cafeteria, so one of those classrooms that they had. We even, I thought maybe there would be something that fire EMT class, I'm like, maybe there's one in here, but it wasn't. So I was like, if it would fit in there perfectly, but again, it's a locked door. But, um, I think we just had just a couple of pockets. We're worried about the, the band again for the, the, um, field and the second floor of, um.
In the other person, I think the, uh, I mean, the people know where they're at and then how to use them, I think, but the where they're at, I mean, there's been numerous cases where the, the AED is right there and it's not utilized.
Well, we're wanting to also do, but it's like this little, like outside sign, but I didn't even notice this was a sign, I don't know. Maybe that's something that we're gonna add also for signage, um, and to explain maybe even the orientation that they are to explain to the teachers when they come in, you know, remind, remind everyone, this is where our AED machine is. Even here in, you know, building for staff here at, at Central Office as a new board member. Ms. Pickering, you know where our AED machine is here in the building?
Know it.
See, so I mean, I think it's just an opportunity that maybe we could.
Have a check the break room.
That's correct.
So, good, uh, you know, but not a lot of people.
I was going to break them too.
You know, yeah.
I think it's part of the CPR training, I mean, we probably, I mean.
Our certified, yeah, our certified staff.
I'm guessing it probably needs to be its own kind of reminder type thing, but I mean, you feel like making your videos.
The video, put it online and let everybody look at it.
I do like the videos.
Everyone loves the videos.
No, but I think the usage and the, the knowledge, I mean, that's, I mean, you want them accessible, but you also, I mean, it, it's tragic to know if it was there and didn't get used.
Well, and in all of our AEDs, it has that directional, you know, telling you what to do. Um, some of the new ones now have a screen, so it actually shows a bit, you know, shows a picture, but again, those are a little more expensive, but again, a lot of ours are very old, so.
So what's the longevity of an AED? I mean, is it?
Um, it's, it all depends on whether we can find the batteries, so, I mean, right now that, when the green light is on, we're good. It's been, it's been very difficult to try to locate to, to get the battery, and that, that's gonna be, that's for the whole, from county. All of our schools in the county got them all at the same time.
They're eager to have some interest in.
I think Reed would, we want to check out Reed maybe.
Yeah, the right, they're just giving us the, the one with the.
One at a time, it's.
Can't really get thirty one at this time right now. Any other questions?
That's what we ask.
Um.
We ask.
I don't have any.
I know.
Maybe we shouldn't ask.
Any mistakes?
Thank you. Um, one thing I did forget to mention, because we had put it in consent, is the R H S girl group overnight field trip request. Um, it's something they do annually, but I just wanted to mention that they, uh, were also receiving grants from the Women's Fund that I attended last weekend, um, to kind of help with their trip and the, uh, girls wrestling team received a grant from the Women's Fund to kind of help them with gear, new uniforms. You know, some of them were wearing singlets, some of them were wearing like shorts and shirts, just trying to get them something that feels comfortable that they, you know. Yeah, I think it's sort of, it's, it's new, so it's figuring out what they want. Um, so I just wanted to give a shout out, they were both, both groups were there, Katie Rising, Robert Lee, um, so. The girl wrestlers kind of, you know, big applause, like, just like they did here, um.
So Mrs. Rising has actually gotten grants from the Women's Fund in prior years as well, so she's done a great job of advocating.
Yes, it was my first time attending and I just, I was tearing up and I'm not, I swear I'm not a tire, but.
It is, it's so hard once.
I mean, we, uh, it was, I guess, the biggest one yet, like, um, so I just wanted to mention that. So, um, any other items anyone have?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm excited that RCS is going to be honoring, uh, Mr. Burkert's, uh, legacy, um, with a plaque, uh, that's going to hang in the orchestra room, um, our, uh, friend Millicent, uh, had a wonderful write-up, uh, in the paper recently just about some of the tributes that are going to be, um, honoring one of our, uh, late greats, uh, Mr. Burkert. So, um, one of those things actually coming up is, uh, the Richmond Community Orchestra is going to have a concert, um, at Civic Hall on Sunday at three P M, so if you're interested.
This Sunday?
This Sunday.
Yeah, couldn't remember the date, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, uh, moving on to preview our upcoming meetings, um, our next school board business meeting is Wednesday, May fourteenth, um, at four P M, um, that is an earlier time change. Uh, as a board, we, uh, are, will be attending the ISBA Spring Regional Meeting in Hagerstown, um, District Six. Are we District Six? I just went to the president's wrong table today, I should remember this, um, so it's always great to, um, kind of get to have dinner and we try to mingle, but generally we always have a school board meeting, so we kind of get there a little later, but, um, you know, can we pack in the van? Maybe I'll drive again this time, so I don't take command, but, um, and then the next policy meeting will be Tuesday, May twentieth, um, here in the boardroom at ten a.m. So. Yes, sir.
Cause I missed the last one, um, is there any possibility of attending by Zoom or, uh, the meeting if by chance I can't make it?
You know, that's actually good. I, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot to make it though. I know, you were reading my mind. I think maybe that would be a good option, um, I work from home, so a lot of times for me to travel over, like, it's, it would be easier.
Yeah.
You know, we're not even forward, um, I'm set up, Alex has already sent me a link, cause I'm gonna be out of town.
Oh, perfect.
So I'm planning here via Zoom.
So maybe we just, well, not Zoom.
Spend that link for every policy meeting, can we make that happen? Just.
Sorry, that, I, I'm, that's for the four o'clock board meeting.
Oh, four o'clock board meeting, sorry.
So policy.
But policy, maybe we just just have this here, this Zoom link, um, because, you know, there are times that I might have to run.
Yep.
Um, but I think it would be helpful and I live on Zoom.
It will.
So. Maybe I'll have a friend kill two of those, um, but no, that is, I do.
Okay, so she is. Moving to adjournment and bell ringer.
Dr. Right.
President Biggum Trustee, so I asked the Mrs. Rich, Hazel Baker, our director's student support communication, revisit the office this evening with a bell ringer. Some pertinent information, the amazing things going on.
Our bell ringer, many of you may have known that yesterday was birthday and two hundred of our students at test went out to Glenn Miller and did an amazing job, um, had the mayor out there in, uh, picking up trash, planting trees, um, you name it. So I'm very excited, um, the hard work of Mrs. Pickering, Mrs. Brazel, um, with, um, Mr. D Hart and, um, Mrs. Gerard, um, and their, and their team of, of staff, just an amazing job, so, um, they've been have, they've been doing something like that for quite a while. You guys remember they used to do quite a bit on birthdays, so glad they're bringing that back and that, that tradition for our students again, so very exciting.
Thank you, Matt.
Thought it was great. Any other items?
No.